Fantastic. All right. Good afternoon, everyone. I want to call to order the Subcommittee of Curriculum and Programs. It is approximately 4:47 and it is Wednesday, January 13th, 2021. The first agenda item-
Let me just call a roll call.
Oh.
Sorry.
Sorry about that.
No problem. Ms. Hurst?
Present.
Ms. Gresham?
Present.
And Ms. Naylor?
Present.
Fantastic. So we will move to the very first agenda item, which is the new ELA curriculum for grades three through five. And prior to us beginning, the Assistant Superintendent Lydia Martinez did let us know that our superintendent, Daniel Warwick, may be running a bit late. So I will start by handing it over to you, Assistant Superintendent, and then you can make way for who it is that will present on the curriculum.
Thank you, Ms. Hurst. I turn it over to Stefania Rochella and her team to discuss our adoption of a new ELA curriculum for grades three to five.
So good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for joining us. It's been about 10 years since we adopted our last grades three to five ELA curriculum. And at that time, we believed that we had selected one of the best options that was available. But now we're 10 years into it and it's time for a new curriculum. It's outdated. There are no technology components with it, which has proven to be a struggle over the past year. We've done what we could with what we had. But moving forward, we need to be more aligned to the standards, to what we should be doing, as well as to the diversity and equity of our kids that we have sitting in front of us 10 years later. So we put teams together. It was our ELA director, Laura Mens, and we have a great ILS here with us, Suzanne Marks, who's from Glenwood, who also works with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed with their curating and when they're analyzing specific curriculums to see what's best for students. So they put teams together. They went through multiple curriculums and we've come to an agreement of what we think will be the best for the students of Springfield. So I'm going to be handing it over to Laura and Suzanne.
Thank you, Stefania. Terry, I'll need to be able to share screen. Can I do so? Yes, I can. All right. So I know we do have some secondary folks here on this meeting with us today. And I just want to say to you, I hope after you see this presentation regarding grades three to five, know that we have a very similar approach in K-2, that it really is our goal and mission to be sending true readers off to you in secondary. So I hope you'll find this informative and not too long. So as Stefania was saying, we actually started searching for material in the 1920s school year, pre-COVID. And we were piloting and vetting and reviewing several different options at that time. It got a little waylaid with the closure. We were also reviewing and studying the curate and ed report resources that are available to us to help us make that decision. As we were closing out that year and looking towards what our needs were, we determined these bullets here to be some of our priorities. Not everything that we need in a curriculum, but things that were non-negotiable. So we were really focused on that equity, diversity, and inclusion topic, as you all know from our presentation earlier in this school year. And that we were really, truly thinking about evidence-based for teaching, reading, and all components of literacy. That's in the forefront now nationally and making sure that all of our approaches and resources really support that. And again, the digital platform that Stefania mentioned and the fact that we really wanted to align to our K-2 work. As we moved into this school year, we landed on three final products that we wanted to take a deeper dive with, with a larger audience. So we assembled a selection committee that we titled Select 2020. Suzanne actually titled it and she's going to talk a little bit about that in a minute. But this committee was almost 50 people. It was comprised of our two elementary chief school officers, Stefania, myself, my small reading department team with another supervisor and coaches, some folks from the ELL department, some folks from the special ed department, six principals, six instructional leadership specialists, six third grade teachers, six fourth grade teachers, and six fifth grade teachers. And of those teachers, several of them represented special education classrooms, ELL classrooms, and a few of them were parents of students in the district. And they were also pretty fairly diverse in our composition. So we really felt like we had a really great stakeholders group to help us dig into this work. Suzanne, I'm going to turn it over to you for a few minutes to talk a little bit about our Springfield Select process.
Hi, and thank you for having me tonight. It's really exciting for me to be presenting this information to you. The first thing I'd like to say is, you know, no great work in education goes without a great acronym. So we came up with Select, which really represented the work that we were doing, the Springfield Public Schools Elementary Language Arts Evidence-Based Curriculum Team. As was mentioned earlier, I've been fortunate enough for the last year and a half to participate with DESI in their Curate Fellowship Program. And Curate stands for Curriculum Ratings by Teachers. So it's giving the educators the opportunity to really look at and explore curriculum resources and find those materials that are best suited to the students that we have in front of us for the state of Massachusetts. In Springfield, we came up with it just specifically to look at our educators and our students in Springfield. Laura, you can go ahead. So I think Laura mentioned earlier that the process sort of began last year with thinking about ed reports and some of the curate reports that were already out. And more reports have been developed over the last year. We looked at print and digital resources for several different curriculum programs. We looked at the indicators and ratings from curate and the ed reports. Each of the educators participated in publisher presentations that included question and answer sessions. We rated each of the products that we looked at on a series of 22 different indicators that we'll talk a little bit more about on the upcoming slides. And we looked at the strengths and challenges that each of the different programs we evaluated had to offer Springfield. At the end of the process, it was intense and there was a lot of work that went into it. But we came to a consensus as a team on what we felt was going to be the best selection for the city of Springfield. The rubric that we use to score and rate each of the curriculum contains two domains, the standards alignment and classroom application domains. And then within each of those domains, there are four criteria that we look at, including text quality, which is about the texts that are included in the program, the classroom tasks and how that affects instruction, accessibility for students, and usability for teachers. So each have equal importance in the process. And then there were three different levels of ratings. Does not meet expectations meant that we could not find evidence to indicate that the materials were high quality. Partially meets expectations were materials that there was evidence around having high-quality materials, but there was still low quality involved in it as well. And then a meets expectations was what we were really looking for on as many indicators as we could get. The materials might not be perfect, but they're pretty close, right? So within each of those indicators, like I said, there's text quality and organization. There are four indicators that we looked at there. I think we want to just point out that that indicator 1C was around materials, including texts that represent various cultures and perspectives to make sure that whatever program we selected had a good representation and that when students read our texts, they're going to see themselves represented in those materials. The classroom tasks and instructions, there were another seven different indicators that we scored. Each of the people that were on the teams evaluated every curriculum on every indicator. So you can imagine the time they spent really going through the materials. Accessibility for students was another critical measure that we looked at. And again, if we look at indicator 3D, we wanted to make sure that the materials represent and value diverse backgrounds, perspectives, and identities. So not only are students of different backgrounds represented in those materials, but then the materials are used in such a way that those conversations take place in the classroom. And then as far as usability for teachers, we looked at a variety of different options, including whether or not the materials were digitally accessible and available and would be able to match with what Springfield had available technology-wise. I know there's quite a bit of information on this last slide, but this is really where the meat of our work came out in our last session. The indicators 1, 2, or the scores of 1, 2, or 3, when we looked at the My View ratings, we came up with a total composite rating of 2.89 out of 3 altogether. So after looking at all of the scores that every educator on the team created, we were able to come up with a pretty high score. And this was, this was a really nice way to look at it at the end. So it made it a lot easier to come up with a consensus because once we looked at all of those scores, people came together and had the conversations around, you know, where we felt the strengths and challenges might be, but that we were able to agree on making a recommendation to select a curriculum.
Typically, when I've come before you with, I just want to say thank you to Suzanne. Her presence and work and her knowledge on the curate process was just invaluable to me as the director. She worked so well with our team. So I just want to publicly thank you, Suzanne. Really appreciated your time. Typically, when I have come before you in the past with curriculums and resources that we've shared, I brought you samples. And obviously, this new way of doing business has prevented me from doing that. So I would thought I would share a few slides with you. I'm going to talk fast and Terry's going to be able to give you this slide deck after the session. But we wanted to have you see a very broad overview of what is available to us here. So when we look at My View Literacy from Savis Learning, they're an offshoot from Pearson. Their curriculum does give us all the resources that we need for reading, writing, speaking, and listening. And also really does attend to some of the SEL needs that we need to focus on in instruction every day. This is a list of some of the notable folks. If you're a literacy guru like we are, some of these names will jump out at you, but some real high-level folks who've had a long history of being in the science of reading and reading an SEL instruction. As with most curriculums, they're divided into what we call thematic units. And they integrate reading and writing and build towards an inquiry project. So this is the kind of work we've been trying to do with our We Learn Initiative over the past few years, really focusing on collaboration in all of our curriculum. But when you think about reading and writing and research and listening and speaking and that ability to collaborate, to provide a project at the end, or possibly do some independent work towards a project, this is just what we were looking for. And a lot of curriculums do have this, I will say that. When we looked at some of the units of studies, we were really impressed by some of the topics that were there. And we highlighted diversity here. And we wanted you to see that over a six-week unit, students are working towards answering this essential question. And this one in particular talks about how can we reach new understandings through exploring diversity? And each week, texts, including the texts highlighted here and other texts, they're answering questions that helped them over the course of that unit to be able to answer that essential question and then work on a project that articulates that message. How can we reach new understandings through exploring diversity is the question. And then they'd have an activity, such as writing a letter, to talk about an inclusive playground. So when we talk about diversity, obviously, we're not just talking about race and ethnicity and language. We're talking about perhaps people with differing needs and abilities. Here's just another example of what the inquiry project can look like, looking at what it means to be free. Children could conduct a survey to find out what it means to be free. The writing instruction looks to really think about two things, writing as a vehicle to learn. We hear a lot about that, writing to understand and that reciprocity between reading and writing. So it's very valuable that children are learning to write in response to texts, something like what we see at an MCAS test. But it's also very important that we're building their ability to write creatively through writer's craft in a way that's very authentic and meaningful to them as individuals, perhaps personally or professionally as they grow older. So here's an example of what it might look like to respond using evidence from text, which is what they're required to do most often when they're answering MCAS-type questions. Here's an example of the more creative side of it, creating a travel article. And here, when Savis Learning presented to us, they made this very individualized to what the teacher might opt to have students try to do, or a student might try to do, making it really personal about Western Massachusetts. We also have supports in here that build on what we've been doing in K-2, where we talk sometimes about a workshop model. That's the language often used. And conferring with students is a really productive and meaningful lens in which teachers can learn about students and give students feedback. So they're given ideas on how to conduct those conferences here. And there's also a lot of support around working with ELL students and special ed students. I mentioned to you that the ELL team and the special ed team were involved in the selection and they were quite impressed with the scaffolds and supports that were present for not just ELLs and special ed students, but students who might be struggling or challenged by materials occasionally. And that's often most of our students. Also wanted to highlight with you that this is a comprehensive approach. When I said reading, writing, listening, and speaking, that also pays attention to spelling and language and conventions. And that is something that our teachers have kind of been going off and trying to pull resources for on their own for a little bit of time now. So we're really pleased that we're able to include it in a very aligned manner with the overall themes. Differentiation is very important to us. And in this My View, they have some reading routines that speak to the whole group and the small group. But most importantly, that they're really grounded in that science of reading that we're hearing so much about, which really just goes back to being evidence-based and being able to teach children how to read. We talk often about how to read and reading to learn. And we still need to be teaching children how to read in grades three to five. Just a little bit more about that, what it might look like with teaching children about syllable patterns. Word study, as we get into the older grades, morphology, understanding how words, where they come from and what word parts mean are really critical to developing vocabulary. There is some teacher choice in here and there's lots of ideas under the teacher-led options for working with students at varying levels, including providing some activities for what we might call the rotation or centers during small group time. And that also might include, again, some decodable work for some of our students in grades three, four, and five that still might be really working hard to crack that code and being significantly below grade level. So something there for, for all students, not just students on grade level, but students below grade level. There's a built-in intervention program, which will be very helpful to us as we move forward. We've had a lot of time loss on learning. So knowing that we're going to have some significant concerns when we get back to brick and mortar, this will be a helpful piece for us. And again, just some real deliberate intentional scaffolds and routines for working with ELL students. For my team, my little tiny team that works with me at the district level, this is a real plus for us, assessments that really are aligned to the teaching and learning that we don't have to build on our own. And the fact that we can use those assessments to get data from the platform that comes with the Savis Learning purchase is really another plus for us because most of our decisions are data-driven. And so as I close up with you, really, what's next for us as a team? We hope that you have appreciated our process that we went through and see from what I've highlighted that we really have chosen a really sound curriculum that we're working with Savis Learning to customize intimate implementation and professional learning plans as we speak. I've been meeting with them every week. I found them to be a really reliable and responsive company. And I think sometimes that's almost as important as the materials we purchase. And we're working on a plan that's going to convene educators as early as this spring to start becoming familiar with the materials so that they're up and running with this curriculum in the new school year. So I thank you for entertaining me, for letting me walk through that long presentation. But we are really excited about the curriculum. And if you have questions for me, we certainly answer them.
All right. Thank you, Stefania, Laura, and Suzanne. And I see that our superintendent has joined as superintendent. Did you want to say anything? Assistant Superintendent did open it up.
Yeah, thanks, Lydia, for opening it up. I just think the team did a great job on this and it was a great presentation. Thank you.
Fantastic. Ms. Naylor, Ms. Gresham, any questions?
No, I don't have any questions, but I have a comment. I think it's a very good presentation. And what I like about it is it's evidence-based. And you have a group of people. And I believe you have some parents on the committee as well?
Teachers who are parents in the district.
Okay, all right. Very good. Very good presentation.
It was, it was a lot of hours to trying and get folks involved, out of school time, too.
You can tell. Yeah, you can tell. Great work.
Yeah, very good. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I, I don't know if it's a question or a comment because I do have an observation. The first thing is that I do agree with Mrs. Gresham. It's very thorough. I think it definitely identifies a lot of problem areas that we've seen. So I do appreciate that aspect of it. The question I have, just for clarification, I saw that there were some self-led models and stuff like that. So is this, it's computer and teacher? Like they can use it in a hybrid setting as well as on the computer kind of thing?
Yes, absolutely. The, we were setting up a meeting with our IT people and their IT people around an integration. And as you know, we're a Schoology district now and they've already have a relationship with Schoology. So we're looking for a very seamless transition to putting those resources together that way.
So let me ask you a follow-up question to that, clarifying question. With the, I apologize, my niece is in the background. Um, she's so cute. But anyways, babies just make you happy. So, um...
When they're not yours.
No. She'll be going back down south soon. And my sister's an educator and they actually went hybrid already. So it was interesting, some of the stories she was sharing with me. But anyways, to stay on topic, when we think about the application of this particular tool, one of the things that I hear a lot from students and even teachers is the concern about once we're not remote, right? Having too much screen time, right? And so I just wanted to make sure that although it has these wonderful elements and everything that we're not going to be relying upon kids being on a screen to be able to go through this curriculum or to learn from it. And so that, that pretty much was the only clarification that I needed.
Are you kidding me? Director of Literacy, it's all about books. You can see my background. We want them to have their hands on real books. Obviously, digital books are wonderful, too. We all use them. But we are concerned about the amount of screen time. And there's a place for it and there's a better purpose for it, perhaps than reading, right? It might be the creating side of it more so. So we definitely want to strike that balance. When we get back to business and brick and mortar, I think we'll see that ship return. And they're getting lots of great materials. They're getting real books for their classroom. So they'll have access digitally if they can't put them in their hands. But there's nothing better than putting real books in kids' hands.
That's true.
And really writing, right, in an authentic manner.
Yep. Thank you. May I ask one more question? And I'm thinking about the curriculum that we have now that we utilize. So for the, the aspect of it that is based on computer, well, does it have that same feature of language and folks being able to read it in their own languages and stuff like that? Or is it only English or Spanish?
That's a great question. I believe we're only English and Spanish right now with these folks. I could research that if it's, if you really need the answer to.
That would be really helpful, Laura, if you could find that out because I know that we have so many different languages in the city. And one of the biggest concerns we have is it's kids really being able to learn. As you know, as a literacy person, if they can learn to read in their own language first, it's easier to teach them how to read in other languages.
Yeah. I think even on the market, when you think about it, I mean, we've talked about this, just trying to get diverse texts that represent the diversity in our community. What's available is very limiting. And sadly, I think what our needs are are far ahead of what is out there. But I will double check for you, Latonya.
Thank you.
Just, just one quick comment. It was really nice to see the, the reading and the writing connecting piece because oftentimes we focus so much on reading and very little on writing. And just to hear the even conversation about writing and learn. And then the other piece I thought that was really important is that, you know, really just looking at the brief presentation to see scholars that represent the population of Springfield. So I think that was, that was good to see.
Fantastic. Thanks.
Thanks, Paul.
Ms. Hurst, will you be needing us to do this presentation for the full school committee? Or are we, is it just going to be informational that we would just come and answer any questions or?
So I, I would defer to the superintendent. I mean, I think it's, you guys typically, you know, give a much concisser or more brief presentation. But I would defer to the superintendent.
Yeah, maybe a little briefer, but, but it's such an important initiative. I think we'd want to have a presentation, maybe try to get it on for the 28th meeting on the agenda with Patty. And we'd make a presentation and certainly open it up to questions again. So I think, just like Denise said, a little more concise. But, but still, I think it's important enough. It's a major piece that we'd want everyone to see. And we get the viewing audience and the public, too, that will know this is coming. So that's important.
Absolutely. So this is on only as an informational item? It's, does it not require a vote of, of the committee? Is that the case?
Yeah.
Okay. So, so no vote is required. Thank you, Stefania, Laura, Suzanne.
Yeah, great job. Thanks so much. A really, really great presentation. This is what it's all about at the end of the day. That was fabulous.
Fantastic. Thank you. So we are going to move on to the second agenda item, which is the Commerce High School mascot. And I will turn it over to you, Superintendent, but I'm also going to jump in on this, too.
Thank you. I so appreciate it, Denise. And I asked a group to be here. I asked Lydia and Dwayne to do some background on what some other communities have done in this regard and that have been through this. And they can bring us some of that. And I asked Paul here as principal and Colleen and Matt from the Empowerment Zone, because the school's in the Empowerment Zone. And certainly, I think as you're looking at something like this, we want to engage the faculty and the student body in the process. So I thought we would, you know, have those folks here to talk about that, too. But I thought maybe Lydia and Dwayne could give us some background on some processes other communities have followed, if you wanted to follow that format.
Sure, we absolutely can do that. But if I could just interject-
Please.
-to just provide some context with how we arrived here. So at, at some point, and it was- before this past summer, it had been, it was pretty public that there were districts across the Commonwealth and across the country who were shedding away from using Native American mascots and languages in their names. And we've also seen that happen on the national stage with some of our pro leagues, right? So football and baseball. And so Latonya and I had also seen it happening or had seen discussions happening by way of the other school committees, by way of the MASC. And then I had also seen it through the National School Board Association that happens to have a Native American caucus. And so it was quite the, the topic to, to ensure that there was real equity, that there was that school districts were recognizing that some of these names and mascots were racist in nature. It had a lot of negative connotation. And so in the rise of the the unrest this past summer after George Floyd, I had a conversation with Superintendent Warwick. And we both recognized that this may not necessarily come as the most easiest initiative, but that it was something that we were at some point going to have to address and have a conversation about. And since that time, I've actually gotten a few inquiries around what is going to happen to the last high school area that has that name. So up in this area, I believe Mohawk Trail, Greenfield area has shed their name. And then there's been quite a few in the eastern part of the state, specifically in the Cape area that has also done that. So I'll, I'll stop there and, and turn it over.
So I asked if, if you're comfortable with that, Dwayne and Lydia to kind of look into some other communities that have embraced this change. And they could talk about some strategies they followed. And then I thought maybe after that, we could get some input from Paul at the school level and Colleen and Matt on their thinking. But Dwayne and Lydia, please jump in. I, I talked to Dwayne actually back in the summer about this and we talked about that this was coming. But Denise was nice enough to give us a little lead time because this summer was pretty tough with just opening school with all we were confronting. So we, we wanted to actually have this discussion earlier, but we were just so overwhelmed by all we were facing that we delayed it till now. Not because it wasn't important. It was just such a challenge getting schools open with all we were dealing with. So thank you for agreeing to give us a little lead time on that. But Dwayne's been working on it and looking into it and prepared to go and Lydia on this. So I'll turn it over to them to kind of give us some insight onto what some other communities have done. Because you're right, some other communities, some other communities changed the name and this was actually the exact name they had on. I think it was Athol perhaps or something. But please take it away. Our AD, Dwayne Early and Lydia Martinez, our assistant superintendent.
Thank you Superintendent Warwick. So yes, I've been in contact with Athol's superintendent, Darcy Fernandez, and with the principal of the high school, Principal David King. They actually provided and gave us step by step as to the process that they used to change their mascot. They also had Red Raiders as their mascot at the high school. And so they did use a couple consultants to also help, help them kind of go through the process so that there would be a neutral party really ensuring that everybody's voice was heard and, and not only to figure out how to get rid of the mascot, but also how to bring in the new mascot, how to vote in kind of the new mascot. And they did do it with community input as well as all the constituents of the city, including parents and students and, and others. And so I do have the step-by-step playbook that I'd be happy to share with you. Ms. Hurst, Ms. Naylor and Ms. Gresham at your discretion. And so basically that's the way they did it. They, they put, they had a town hall type. And they held the school committee meeting where they had a speak out and they allowed everyone to kind of come in and speak and they gathered all that information. And based on that information, based on the fact that the majority of the folks did want to change it, they went ahead and they changed their mascot. And so again, I could get into details of who they used, but we do have all that in writing from Athol.
Thanks, Lydia. I think the process is important. So I think taking, having a good process is very important here. So I don't know if you want to give just a quick overview of the process they followed because it seemed pretty comprehensive, but it's up to you Denise. You're muted Denise.
Sorry.
I do that all the time.
So I, I do think that the process is very important because I, and I, and thank you so much for doing the research that you all did go and do. Athol was actually not one of the districts that came up on, on my list. So that's great to hear that you were able to find one that wasn't too, too far away. But everyone that I heard from, from Medford, from North Borough, from everyone talked about how important it was to have a process and a process that had community input. It definitely did not necessarily go over easily in, in some communities. So I'd love, or I speak for the, for, I don't want to speak for Latonya and Barbara, but it would be helpful to have a brief overview. Ms. Naylor, Ms. Gresham?
Yes, I agree. Having an overview would be helpful.
Athol, when I read about it, it jumped off the page at me because it happened to be Red Raiders. So I said, wow. This is, but then I read they, they had a, they had a consultant help them and things like that. So Lydia and, and research on it. So I thought having a good process, I think, will really help us through this. So I don't know if you want to go into it a little bit, Lydia, and give us a little flavor for it.
So basically what they did, they started exactly like this with just a subcommittee meeting with the school, with the school committee to ensure that everyone who really wanted to do this and participate in it. They then had the school committee set a date for a special school committee meeting to hear the public input regarding the high school's use of the Red Raider mascot. The district provided a platform, speakers contacted the superintendent's office for guest speak outs, kind of the same process that we use for regular speak outs. The guest speakers then registered for the speaking slot during the special meeting. The district and the high school had previously been engaged with a local group who were vested in seeing a change of the mascot. So that group helped them reach out to the Native American guest speakers who signed up to speak during the public forum. And they gave me the name of who they actually used to get actual native speakers to kind of talk about why it's, it's necessary to change them and why it was offensive. They ended up having 10 speakers that spoke in the favor of retiring the mascot. And they had zero speakers come out to be against changing the mascot after they presented all the evidence that they had. They started, the school committee decided to act on a motion from a school committee member at the end of the special meeting to retire the mascot. So the emotion was made to do that. They had originally wanted to include the topic of the subsequent school committee agenda. But the messaging was so overwhelming from the native speakers that the rest of the committees wished to not delay on the retirement and they were able to get right to the vote because there wasn't that much discussion based on once the presentations were made by all the Native Americans that they were able to bring on board to that committee meeting. And once they voted, Athol High School then formed two subcommittees, one from the student body and one for staff and community members. And these two committees worked concurrently with the principal, who was the facilitator for most of it. Both committees helped guide them in developing their process to remain working concurrently until they got to the end of the product, which was to bring in a new mascot. So what should they replace that mascot with, with once they voted to change it? They actually used somebody from Springfield College. I do have the name who actually helped them through the process and, and how to come up with deciding what the next mascot should look like. That took them about three weeks because they wanted to make sure that they had enough time for all those that weren't able to come to the speak out to actually send in their comments and to actually give their suggestions. And they did that in both English and Spanish. At the end of the suggestion phase, the, they heard, the Heard Strategy and Storytelling Company assisted them. So that's the company that they actually used in the segregating the results and provided Athol with, you know, what they possibly could use for the mascot based on the student and staff community input. So the top 10 results were then released to the community and student and staff community reconvened to assess the survey datas and come up with a decision. They brought it down to the final three. And then the final three were brought to school officials and school committee to, to pick one of the three. And that's basically just a quick overview of what they, they did. And, and Dwayne, I don't know if you got anything different from that?
Yeah, thanks Assistant Superintendent and good evening everyone. I was actually able to reach out to Dan Beavis, he's the athletic director at Athol and myself and Lydia sort of tag teamed on this one. He gave me sort of the break, brief, not the brief, but the overview that Lydia just presented. It, it was very important to them to, to, to address this issue. And as well as involve a lot of community stakeholders, alumni, and as Lydia stated, Native Americans who, who, who came to an open forum and, and each, each of them did speak against having that moniker still around. So again, I, I wouldn't want to repeat what Lydia just stated, but it, it was an issue up there and, and the athletic director was up there, was able to give me sort of a step-by-step process that Lydia shared with.
I don't know. I know I also talked to Matt and I know he's had discussions with Paul and Colleen about this some time ago. So I didn't know if we wanted to get their thoughts and input on this.
Absolutely.
Thank you Denise.
Yeah. Thank you Denise for, for, for convening us on this really important topic. You know, we, we of course want this process to be an inclusive one. Lydia, we, we certainly appreciate all of the, the work that you've done to learn how other communities have approached this and, and certainly want to approach it in, in the best way, you know, that we possibly can. I think for us, we just want to make sure that we're getting, you know, whatever direction. Denise, you and the members of the school committee want to provide for us so that we're, we're coordinating this effort and, you know, as again, as an inclusive way as possible, right? And the last thing I'll say is that if it, if, if we do move forward with this, with this mascot change, I just want to highlight that there are just a number of funders, number of, of foundations that fund just what the implications of mascot changes have been from the Native American Heritage Foundation to Reebok had a program a few years ago to help defray those costs. So we're, 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 we're happy to dig in and in whatever ways that we can. I, I do want to just stress that we want to move in, in lockstep with, with you and, and again, make sure that this process is an inclusive one. Paul, I think you had some remarks too. And Colleen, please.
Yeah, thank you, Matt. Thank you Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent. I, you know, it's really just nice to see that it at, it is at this level that we are thinking about it and, 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 and willing to take action. And Lydia, the research that you've done, I think it's really will be helpful. I must be honest and say that I was really surprised when I, you know, started working here at Springfield at Commerce that that mascot was told because the conference that I was in back in the Northeast, there was a movement already by the MIA to really make sure like all high school made those changes. So I thought that happened out west also. And we had started when I, when I, when I got to Commerce, we, we have started some of that work because we've asked not to use like any of the letterheads or any of the banners that had that mascot on there. So we're no longer using those. We're using the CC. So we've started that. And then this year, what was going on throughout the country, we started a little writing assignment where within their English class and some of their advisory type classes, we started teaching them about mascot and what Raiders really meant and, and really trying to educate our student body about the mascot that we had. And then once I received information from Matt that it would be at this level, we've kind of backed off and wanting to respect this process and, and hear more about what will be the next step. But we, we did start some work around, around that.
I, I think the only thing that I would add is that I'm just so appreciative of everybody on this talking about how important this is. Nothing accentuates how people view us is how we put ourselves out there. And, you know, in our efforts to really truly build anti-racist and equitable schools, this is a huge step in a direction that how others see us. Even though we see ourselves in one way, it's how others see us. And I'm just really appreciative of the school committee and Lydia and Dwayne and Superintendent Warwick to really, to really like take this on. This is not an easy change. This is hard for some communities. As you were saying Denise, some communities really struggle with this. But it's the right thing to do. And I'm just really grateful to be partners to, to make that change and to work in a very inclusive way with you and with this community to heal and make this the right, the right thing for Commerce.
So I'll just add really quickly, again, thank you Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent and AD Early and all of you from the zone. I appreciate you all being present and I appreciate the research that's gone in. I think I want to make sure that I acknowledge Mr. Neal and say, and I, and I know that this, you know, has to be a collaborative effort and, and we need to make, you know, a collaborative decision. But you know, I think it's really important that we include the student body and the changes that are, that we're hoping will take place. And so it's great to hear that you all have already started some work. And I think that, you know, it's really important to make sure that our students have a voice in, in this process and potentially a voice in, you know, the new mascot. And so it, you know, if we decide to go the route where we have a consultant who helps us, you know, execute this process, then that's great. I think it would just, it's really important for us to ensure that that consultant knows that we also want to include our, our students and our administrators that are in the building, you know, day in, day out.
And Ms. Hurst, that was part of the process that I asked by you. So I agree with you 100%. They actually included everyone in the city.
Mrs. Naylor or Ms. Gresham?
No. No, but I do agree that having the student body as a part of it, it would be great.
Yeah, I, I think that student body involvement is, is absolutely essential. I agree.
I agree as well. And I, and I really would like to commend Mr. Neal and Matt and Colleen as well on the fact that you've already started this process. So I imagine when we were thinking about it, we, we kind of wondered how you all would feel. And to hear that you already started the process and are interested and keep continuing to move forward makes it such a relief for us. And, and then for us to figure out how to do it together, I think is going to be helpful and, and allow us to do it in the most inclusive way possible. So just thank you to, to each and every one of you. And, and this is important. This is important work.
Agreed. So may I ask next steps? What, what would that include? Or should we? I'm speculating that we should ensure that we loop the whole board in. But, and when we do that at the January 28th meeting or whenever our next meeting is where we report out on our subcommittees, perhaps we reconvene this, this subcommittee to then discuss next steps. But we, we, attorney folks, would we need a vote to move forward on this process? Or would we just be? Would we just be bringing it to the full board, right? Because it would appear to me that we would need to have some consensus from the full board to even execute planning, right? Some of the plans that Assistant Superintendent Martinez talked about.
Right. So this was on just for informational items. And so there is not notice on here under the open meeting law for a vote. So I think the appropriate step would be to put it on the full committee agenda as a full committee vote, if in fact you think a vote is necessary. It may be further informational.
It may be further informational, depending upon where you want to, where the team wants to go with it. I don't know if that helps answer your question, but it's just informational at this point in time. There need not be a vote tonight. Goes to the full committee, the full committee could choose to endorse it by a vote.
To endorse the process?
Right.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay. So so we could do that. We could, Superintendent, does that sound like?
No, it sounds like a perfect solution. Get the 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 committee to endorse a process. If the full school committee endorses a process, that that would be a voting item to endorse the process.
Correct.
Then it would go back to the subcommittee to follow up on the process and bring back the final recommendation again for school committee for probably yet another vote.
Absolutely. Okay. So we'll we'll start there. So.
And maybe in the meantime, as a suggestion, maybe Lydia and Dwayne could work with Paul and the team at Commerce and Matt and Colleen to just start drafting up a process for us to potentially follow up through this, if if you think that's okay.
Absolutely. And so what I what I was going to say is that for clarity purposes, I do think that we bring it to the full board and share what came out of subcommittee, but that we have it on the agenda for a vote for the process.
The advantage for a vote is that it shows the, you know, on the record commitment by school committee members to address this issue. I mean, technically, it's a ministerial duty, you know, you're you're swapping things out. But but I think, given the subject matter, it needs to be a vote that would then show your constituents and the school committee community how seriously you're taking the process of changing, of making this change.
Absolutely.
And we could get suggestions at that point from other members on something to perhaps add to the process or look at that they'd be interested in.
Sure thing. Absolutely. All right. If there are no further questions or or comments, then we could, oh, yes, please, go ahead.
Just for clarification, so did you want us to start kind of drafting a process that you're going to bring to the school committee? Or are you just going to talk about it at first, get the endorsement, and then we talk about the process? Just want to be clear on that.
But wouldn't you want to have the process put before the school committee to endorse the process? So you would present it to them and then?
Just in draft form for their feedback.
Yeah.
So, yeah, if you wouldn't mind doing that, Dwayne and Lydia, working with Paul and Matt. So, you know, I think the student body piece that Paul talked about is so important and getting those pieces in so the school committee would just have a general framework for the process that we're going to take so they'd feel comfortable voting to go forward with.
And know that it's a thoughtful process.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you. So if there are no further questions and or comments, I want to thank the ELA Department, the superintendent and his cabinet, as well as those from the zone that have joined us. Thank you so much for today. Is there a motion to close the meeting?
Motion to adjourn?
So moved, is there a second? A roll call vote is required.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
I'm sorry, out of order. Ms. Hurst?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
And Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
All right. One insufficient vote, this matter passes, and our meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Great job, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks, folks. Good to see you.